Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is May 26th after 7:00 PM. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. The first item on our agenda tonight is to discuss a preliminary plan for 44 Clear Pond Road, Derek Maxey applicant. So we do have a plan that was provided. That plan was sent to town council and we did receive comments back from council. It appears that the plan does not meet the requirements of the subdivision, to be a subdivision, because it does not show the requirements for lots. I'm going to defer to town planner on any comments on this.
Well, yes. What was filed does not show subdivision. A subdivision's defined as to afford more building lots. However, I believe someone's here representing the applicant. So that's the definition of a subdivision. However, a preliminary plan can be amended at any time. So can I see he has some boards?
Okay. So if you're here to represent, could you identify yourself and then please explain?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Rick Freiberg from TEC. I'm here tonight representing the applicant for 44 Clear Pond Road. So yeah, so a preliminary plan is just what it says it is. It's a preliminary plan. It's a starting point for a discussion about a subdivision. The reason that preliminary plans exist is it basically is an opportunity to meet with the town, talk to town staff, talk to the boards, get feedback on any items that might come up, technical or issues with subdivision control law that should be addressed prior to moving into the definitive subdivision stage of a project. So as an example, this issue was raised about, you know, the number of lots that are proposed in the plan. The subdivision that was submitted proposes for two parcels. I'll be careful with my words. Two parcels, a right-of-way parcel. A right-of-way parcel, that's up at the top of the plan, right there. That comes in off of the existing driveway off Clear Pond Road. And then the remainder of the parcel, which is the remainder of the Lakeville Country Club. These items come up. Sometimes you get comments back from Board of Health or other departments, issues with subdivision control law. The planning board, through these discussions, has the ability to work with the applicant to amend the plan, to bring it into compliance of subdivision control law as part of the preliminary filing. You actually have three choices. You can approve the plan as it is, you can approve as amended, or you can disapprove of the plan. If it's disapproved for any reason, an issue with subdivision control law, for example, the applicant has the ability to make adjustments to the plan to bring it into conformance and without prejudice, reprovide the plan, not as a refiling, but as a resubmission. And the way it works technically is the disapproval is revoked or withdrawn. And then the project moves forward towards the definitive subdivision plan stage. So in the interest of this technical issue that we're talking about, the difference between the definition between a lot and a parcel, I think there's a couple of ideas that I had that I think, you know, this is the sort of the form, this preliminary plan stage, to talk about ways to possibly amend the plan, to bring it into conformance with subdivision control law and also the subdivision regs of the town. Is it appropriate, Mr. Chair, for me to show an idea or two?
Go right ahead.
Okay. So one idea, this is my first time in front of this board. I have not done a subdivision with you before. But many towns are not favorable on cul-de-sacs or additional dead-end streets. Oftentimes, they propose, or they create issues for emergency response personnel and also a lot of times you end up with sort of dead-ended utilities. So one proposed option that would remedy the issue with subdivision control law would be to propose a through street that went from the Clear Pond driveway and instead of ending at a cul-de-sac, continue through to Harcourt. That would create a right-of-way and a parcel up here, sort of where the solar panels are on the site, and then the remainder here. So that would be the creation of two developable lots and a right-of-way, which I think would bring it into conformance with subdivision control law. Alternatively, if the board is okay with the idea of a cul-de-sac... If the board is okay with the concept of a cul-de-sac and not creating a through street, alternatively, simply the exact plan that was submitted with the right-of-way located here and then adding this red lot line here that sort of subdivides the solar lot from the balance of the lot, again, creating a right-of-way lot, a development lot, and a development lot. Each of the two alternatives that I showed you, in my opinion, would bring it into conformance with subdivision control law and the town regulations, and also would be legal lots. They have the appropriate amount of frontage and the appropriate lot area. So again, you know, at this preliminary plan stage, this is sort of the purpose of these meetings, is to make sure that, and it can be very informal, I think the minimum requirement is can be drawn on trace paper with a pencil at these meetings, is to kind of hash these things out, make sure this line drawing exercise is at least started the right way, so that as projects move into a much more definitive, or much more detailed definitive subdivision stage, that things are at least off on the right foot in terms of where the lines are drawn. I think probably goes without saying, what this plan is not, what a preliminary plan is not, is an approval of any development. There's no buildings or anything shown on the plan for folks who can't see the boards. It's truly just lot lines on a piece of paper. There is an approval of a subdivision plan is not the same thing as an approval of a project. It's no special permit, et cetera.
I know you're not the applicant, but you're here on behalf of the applicant. Why are you putting this plan in?
So the plan is a lot protection for zoning freeze.
So my understanding is the applicant's, he has a purchase and sale to sell the property. So why would he do that?
Why would he protect?
Why is he trying to protect the zoning if he's selling it?
Well, it's a landowner's rights to be able to, you know, maintain the value of their property and more restrictive zoning is less valuable than more restrictive zoning.
So I guess, I'm a little lost with that because the purchase and sale agreement has no contingencies. So why would he go through these efforts to freeze the zoning if it doesn't matter?
And I'm not the applicant, you're right.
Yeah, I apologize for kind of putting you on the spot here.
That's okay.
But I gotta ask somebody.
Yeah, I'm the one here. I get it. Is it okay to answer?
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the landowner is within their legal rights to file this preliminary plan. It's a subdivisible parcel. There are certain protections afforded by pursuing a subdivision on the lot, and it's within their legal rights to do so. I think that would be the sort of, that's the answer.
Understood. Do any planning board members have any questions?
I do.
Or comments?
Michelle? Just in reading the PNS, I know that it said that there wasn't to be any zoning issues taken by the seller. So I'd have to pull it up to read the correct terminology. But it is written in there that the seller isn't supposed to be making any sort of zoning moves during this time. So it is confusing why he's doing this.
Okay. Sorry. Typically, all questions directed to the chair. I'm not a party to the purchase and sale agreement. I'm a civil engineer that was hired to put together the preliminary plan.
Yep.
There's no change in zoning requested by the applicant or the divider in this case. Again, it's simply a landowner pursuing what they're totally legally entitled to do, which is to pursue a subdivision of their parcel. There's no zoning change being sought by the divider in any way.
Pete, you have any questions?
Yeah, just, so with the pending, you know, removal of this property from 61A, wouldn't that sort of put this on hold until that was remedied?
So, yeah, so there's...
My opinion, it should be, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So there are statutory requirements about timeframes that are associated with this. The ideal scenario is that this meeting wouldn't happen until after the town ballot. But there's a 45-day clock that starts from when the preliminary plan is filed that dictates this hearing occur. So what the preliminary plan does, again, like I said, it's more of a line drawing exercise than anything else. It's not a recorded plan. It's basically a basis to start a definitive plan. The definitive plan...
Starts a clock.
Starts a clock. Yep, exactly.
And there's actually, my understanding is there's no, there's no constructive approval of this either, that if the planning board fails to act, it's just, the clock's running.
Yeah, it just basically says, exactly. It basically just says, if there's no action taken, then you're sort of free to proceed with the definitive subdivision plan. And the time clock on that is seven months from the submission of the preliminary plan. In this case, that was April 19th. So the definitive plan wouldn't need to be filed until November 19th, if my math adds up. So that's why, you're exactly right, you know, shouldn't this happen after a decision at a town meeting or a town ballot? But the statutory requirements, the timeframes dictate that this has to happen now. I believe 45 days from April 19th, which was the filing date, is June 2nd or 3rd.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Pete?
No.
Michelle?
Jack, do you have any comments, questions? You know, Mark, you know, going back to Michelle's comments and your questions to this gentleman, is there any benefit to having the owner come in here and explain to us what his purposes are, whether it's before the town vote or after the town meeting? Because it's not clear to me what the whole purpose is here behind this gentleman's, the owner's...
Well, I think that the purpose is to freeze the zoning. I don't know that there's a way that you can force the owner to come in. He's hired somebody to do that representation for him. So here we are.
Okay.
Mark, do you have any comments? And with that, I got to preface to go to the two plans that we've been presented with for either a cul-de-sac with a division of a lot line or an actual through street. Would you rank a recommendation or not?
So the, so two things. One is you have to consider it within 45 days, but you don't have to make your decision within 45 days. So we can continue this matter to another meeting date, to make a decision, to have them come in with a little more detail on one of the two alternatives, whichever one the board prefers. I would suggest that since this is a commercial zone property that, and it's used as a commercial property with a lot of traffic from time to time, especially on weekends, coming through the existing driveway, which is where the cul-de-sac location would be, that rather than impact the...
Additional Harcourt Street?
The Harcourt Street neighbors with whatever traffic may or may not be permitted that way in the future.
Could it be a cul-de-sac if the planning board were to act or is it a recommendation?
Yeah. I would recommend that even though if this moves forward to an alternative plan, it'll have a different access. But I think, I think it's just, it's important not to impact Harcourt, even if it's in, on paper. So...
We felt, if I may, we felt similarly, and that's why I wanted to show sort of the two different options. Some boards are really, they don't look favorably on cul-de-sacs because of dead-end utility connections or something like that. But oftentimes, there are other considerations, other streets that are affected, and at least the cul-de-sac option limits it to one street instead of two. So we want, wanted to show it both ways.
Very good. I appreciate that.
Right. And I think utility considerations really aren't an issue here. Currently, there's no water line or there's definitely no sewer.
Yeah. Okay. So I think that the planning board's satisfied at this time. I see we have a lot of public here. If anybody would like to come up and make a comment, I asked that they come up to this chair with a microphone, state their name, and then any comments they'd like to make, please direct them to me.
Jim Mara, 15 Feson Run, Lakeville. And I mean, I have to start with the basic, how is this property zoned currently?
It's zoned business.
So it's zoned business, but they want to put in residential development?
All we're looking at is just the subdivision of the land. We're not looking really at a change in the zone.
So it's currently zoned business. Just trying to make sure I understand this. I'm new to this zoning law. So it's zoned business, and are they, are they preserving or freezing this under this DOD again? Is this how it's...
I believe that's the intent, yes.
Yeah, the intent to use the DOD to be able to, because the overlay district, we can try to change this from business to residential, if it goes that route?
I'm sorry.
No. Say that again?
It's zoned business.
Correct.
Is this plan to put in homes?
I don't know what the plan is for. They're only showing a perimeter. It's basically a perimeter plan.
It's my understanding, was it a residential plan? I thought that's what it said on the plans, which I don't have in front of me. I thought it was a residential plan.
No, it's a preliminary subdivision plan. You can subdivide commercial property as well.
Okay, so it could be commercials, not changing zoning?
That's correct.
So they're not trying to put homes back here, I guess, is what I'm saying. But they could?
There's no proposal of that yet.
Yet. Okay. So, and they're trying to freeze the DOD, I guess, is it, even though we got all this litigation going on?
It could be. It could be their intent. To me, it appears to be their intent.
Freeze is all zoning.
It freezes the zoning, but it's business zone. That's what I'm trying to get an understanding.
The underlying zone is business zone.
Right.
But if, to your point, if the Development Opportunities District sticks, that's an overlying zone.
Right. Which gets me back to this, not to get into litigation, because I'm not trying to get into that. But I don't know if anyone listened to the hearing that just happened in Boston within the last two weeks, what the judge is saying about this overlay zone? I mean, it's pretty compelling. I mean, the judge has his decision yet, but it's not very positive on how Lakeville's using this DOD. It's the same thing. The DOD's not shown on any map in Lakeville, right? The official town map for Lakeville, which has all the zoning, which I have in here, the residential, the business, the mixed use. There is no DOD on this map for Lakeville, that's for sure. For some reason, that's not there. Then when you go to the bylaw for the DOD, nowhere in that bylaw does it say, oh, this DOD applies to this specific land, like it does for the other overlay districts in Lakeville. They specifically identify the designated districts they apply to in the bylaw. And so the judge is saying, well, it's not on the map. It's not in the bylaw.
Can I just, I just...
So I don't know how this DOD can keep being used like this. As a taxpayer in Lakeville, you got an issue with this DOD, and the fact that they're even entertaining plans under the DOD when there's litigation, it should just be frozen until it's resolved. Why would we get into another mess?
I don't think that that's the process that that takes. I mean, could you speak to that, Mark?
As far as which, which issue? You mean as far as removing the DOD?
If this is a question about zoning, if this is a question about zoning, do they just stop everything in the world?
No, you can't. You can't really do that. You can, you can't institute, pass at town meeting, a moratorium on the implementation of certain types of zoning or the application for certain permits. So for example, for cell towers or adult uses, it's often used while a town crafts a bylaw in order to implement. That's when moratoriums are adopted by town meeting. Like you have to write an actual, an article that for a moratorium to put a freeze on applications during that time period. So that's really not what we're talking about here, you know, a particular use, because the DOD allows multiple types of uses. So I'm not entirely sure whether it'd be appropriate to put a moratorium on new filings for the DOD. I mean, I'd have to think about that, because you just brought it up, to ensure that it would be a legal thing to do. As far as your comments about the applicability of the DOD in scattered places around town, anywhere in the community, again, it's similar to those other types of uses, where you have an overlay district that might say, in residential zones, you can have cell towers. But it has to be on a parcel where you can have a fall zone of a certain size. Well, that eliminates a lot of parcels. So, and it's not on any one, there's no map that shows where they can be located. Same thing with adult uses. You have to be 200 feet from a church, a school, you know, a park, et cetera. So it's not on any one parcel. It's, it might be able to be located in a particular district or in multiple districts within the community. So...
You're not changing zoning.
Although the language is, is not very well crafted, I'm not entirely sure, and that's up to the judge to decide whether it's, it's, but the methodology, I think, is okay.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you.
Okay.
Because being a lawyer and dealing with the law for 40 years, the town of Lakeville has problems coming down the pipe. They have a bylaw that got passed in 2012, the DOD. There was no action on the DOD until the hospital. For some reason, whoever's in power decided to use the DOD with town council advice, is what I'm learning, that you could interpret the bylaw as you reasonably, is what we're getting feedback on. So, yeah, the judge is going to make a decision. He's got standing issues. But as far as the overlay district for the entire town, rezoning, even the hospital property, from mixed use to industrial, problematic. This, this property is business. So all I'm trying to get at is, hey, if you're looking to put in 50, 60, 70 homes in there through the DOD, you're going to be in the same position again. And I get it. I'm a lawyer. You guys get, town council's giving you advice. And I respectfully disagree with all the advice. I heard, I don't know her last name, Ms. Amy.
Russell.
She was at the, at the last proceeding. And in fact, she should clarify the record when she told the judge, we would never pass a bylaw that implements the permit stage of the bylaw, but then go back and then designate an area that it applies to. And that's just totally false, because there's one bylaw that's already in here. They did that exact same thing. They passed the bylaw, an overlay district. They, and this is the seven-point, you guys know these, I think it's the mixed-use development district. They passed the bylaw, applied it to a specific district, designated it in the bylaw, put it on the zoning map, and they added another clause in the bylaw, any additional smart growth overlay districts, as may be approved from time to time by a future town meeting. It's pretty clear. Here's where the overlay applies, and then if we want to apply it to another area, we'll go to another meeting in front of the town, get a two-thirds vote if the town wants a warehouse or 100 residences here, they'll put it in. So it does keep coming back to this DOD. I hate to sound like a broken record, but it does, because you're going through this whole process. He's clearly trying to preserve his rights under the DOD, which is on that plan.
So it'll end up in court.
Right. It's great for the town. We will end up in court. And unfortunately, town residents have to engage council, pay for all those lawyers' fees, and the town's letting this happen. Hey, this is what the judge said. You can get a transcript from that hearing. The town should have that transcript. And the judge says, he's concerned about applying this overlay to every piece of property in the town of Lakeville, any 25-acre piece of property. Where is it? It's not in there. This is what he's doing here. And then second of all, you got a great point, Chairman. We got a PNS to build a state-of-the-art facility, and I respectfully, there are contingencies, because if you go to the Mass General laws, that offer is not supposed to be contingent in any way on zoning changes, which is the DOD. Because the property at the hospital is zoned mixed use. The property at the Lakeville Country Club is dead. It's native business. So in order to put a warehouse, you have to change the zoning. And that's what, that is not a valid bona fide offer. Now, town council, it's right in there. Contingencies is just one of the ways that you can get out of that offer. There's another way. It can't be dependent, that offer can't be dependent on a zoning change. Well, and I said this at the public hearing, well, how can you put a warehouse at the Lakeville Country Club if it's zoned business and you need it to be zoned industrial, then you would need, you would need a zoning change. So that is not a bona fide offer, but we're going through all this votes, and the poor town's got to go through this process of about $14 million. But it's the same thing. This DOD, everyone's going down this road. Amend the DOD, clarify, there's nothing prohibiting us from clarifying the DOD. You should be able to put a freeze until this DOD has been clarified by a town vote. We're just creating more and more problems. Litigation's expensive for the homeowners, that's for sure. You know, and it's expensive for the town, probably. You know, but fortunately for them, they got Rhino that's footing the bill right now, probably mostly. Ms. Amy didn't even file a brief, in her case, because she's probably keeping her legal costs down for the town, which is great. But it's so unnecessary for the town to be going through this, where they're using the DOD, which is the subject of two lawsuits in land court, and now we're going to go through another road. Even if you do approve it, you're looking at another lawsuit. It's like, why do we not just stop and say, how is this land zoned? And is it zoned properly?
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mark?
Yep. I'm sorry. I'm going on and on.
So, two things. The Development Opportunities District is designed as an overlay over the whole town. That's how it's written.
Exactly.
It doesn't show on the zoning map.
Right. And it doesn't say in the bylaw where it applies either.
And we have another zone in town that's the same exact thing. It's the Water Resource Protection District.
Yep.
Doesn't show on the zoning map, overlayed over the whole town.
Right.
Same, same process.
Same process.
And again, I'm not a lawyer.
The judge addressed that.
You know what?
The judge addressed that, with all due respect.
I'd love to have a lawyer on the board. Why aren't you on a board? Why aren't you on a board?
Yeah, well...
Why don't you help us, then?
Maybe I will.
If it's so clear...
It's, well, you know what? I'm getting involved. I initially got involved because it was concern residents. Now I'm getting involved because I think, I'm trying to protect the town. I mean, I was like, really? I'm like, is this, you know, one of the residents got up there and said, how do we protect this from the next developer coming in and the next developer coming in? Stop using the DOD. It doesn't give, it doesn't give the planning board, no disrespect, the authority to change zoning.
Right. And you know what? That's why we're here tonight, just looking at a subdivision.
All right, I get it.
Not, not the Development Opportunities District. And I appreciate your concerns and your frustration and your vigor towards addressing this. But, and you're a lawyer, so you know, tonight, we're looking at that plan.
Yep.
And that's what we got to deal with.
But I want to be on the record that you're using the DOD again. You're using the...
They, we aren't.
Yeah, they're trying to use the DOD, and the town's going to get sucked into another situation. Mr. Maxey doesn't even have the courage to come here and sit here and explain. You got a PNS to put a state-of-the-art warehouse, and you're doing this. Explain it to us. Explain why you, it's not your fault. You're just doing your job. You're getting paid to do what you gotta do. I get it. But, you know, it really is disappointing. You know, it's just disappointing.
If you could, you know, just direct everything to me.
I'm sorry. Yep. I'm new to this, 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 this speaking, yep. Here.
So you understand, I think, that the position we're in. I understand your desire to get this out in the open.
Yep.
We see it. We know about it. It's just, it's the crap sandwich I eat every two weeks.
We got to work on changing the zoning. It's really, and the water resource, just so you know, being a lawyer, do you know what it says? The Water Resource Protection District shall be considered to be superimposed over the entire town. It's got magical words in there that are not in your DOD.
Yep.
That's the distinction. And this judge, trust me, he's already gone through, he's gone through your mixed-use development. He's gone through, what's the other one? He went through your mixed use. He went through the other overlay district. This isn't me. I mean, he's going through, and he's saying, where does it say it applies? Why didn't they put it on the map? Maybe an oversight. Then he said, well, why isn't it in the bylaw? It's not in there. Then your bigger, the bigger thing is in 2017, I hate to do a history lesson, Selectman Burke, I believe it was, got up at a hearing where Mr. Maxey still owned a hospital land, but we got to focus on this DOD, so I want to get it out. land, but we've got to focus on this DOD, so I want to get it out. And he made it clear. So there's this Selectman right in our same town, lawyer, he was, I believe, real estate lawyer, probably a zillion times smarter than me. And he, he made it clear, on the record, we got the video, if Derek were to propose something that did not conform with the zoning, for example, you have to propose a zoning change, and that's a very big deal. You got to go to the town meeting, you got to get a two-thirds vote, that's very hard to do. So I think what Derek's saying, his goal is to stay within the existing zoning, which is mixed use. And if he were to propose something that required approval from the planning board, then they'd have to, we'd have to get a town vote, we're going to change the zoning. So in 17, the town wasn't following this DOD. In 17, the DOD had been in place for five years, no issue. In 2020, something changed in Lakeville, and the DOD now is the, the savior for all these developers. Somehow, eight years later, well, the DOD had been there for eight years. Derek knew, he's, Derek's all over that tape. I want to, I'm going to clean up that property, I guarantee you I'm going to clean it up, I'm going to sell pieces of property, and I'm going to use it to clean it up, and I'm not, I'm going with what the property currently is zoned for. It was like no mystery here, like, that the DOD didn't apply. Someone decided that it did. And now, I get the hospitals got environmental issues, they're trying to clean it up, I get all that, but if you're going to change zoning, you got to do it with a two-thirds vote. That's the bottom line.
Well.
You know, in, in my legal opinion, and as, and as a resident of Lakeville. But my point is, we're entertaining all these things, and the DOD's still out there.
Yeah.
We don't want more lawsuits. There will be another lawsuit, I'm confident, if the, if the planning board says, yeah, we're going to let you put a warehouse there, or we're going to let you put 100 houses there, and it's not zoned for residential. It's just, it's just going to be another problem. I mean, let the taxpayers, let the, let the residents vote and say, if we want to change it, start from square one. The bylaw's not clear. It's clearly not clear, the judge has concerns, so why don't we say, you can stop and say, because of all this litigation, we need to revisit what we're doing with the DOD. It's not, the judge has clearly said he's not taking it away.
May I just suggest something?
Yep.
So since he's suggested something that Mark Resnick, our town planner, wasn't quite familiar with, about a potential freeze.
Moratorium?
Or moratorium, moratorium, thank you. Is it possible that we could continue, find out an answer to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think our action is going to be forced to continue anyway, because of some of the stuff that needs to be addressed in the plan.
Because I would like a.
The moratorium issue, even if you can put a moratorium on an overlay district, which you probably could do, it's similar to the other things, although it's for multiple uses. It's, the moratorium has to go to town meeting, it's just like a regular article. Now, already, the planning board has submitted an article to remove the DOD, and will be holding public hearings probably in June or so, but, or July, not entirely sure when we'll post those for a public hearing.
Yep.
But, you know, and then the board's talked about, you know, modifying the DOD or the overlay district, and trying to work on having something similar, so that we can, the town can still have some growth.
Yes.
And, and commercial growth. The DOD does do certain things. And, but, but trying perhaps in the second version of it, have it be more targeted, I think, is what we had talked about, you know, and it's a, it's a longer planning process. But like any bylaw, oftentimes, they go through, you know, they get adopted, and after some years of application, it gets amended, and then, you know, times change, and it gets amended again, so there's a process. It's a living document.
And, and I get that, and just for the record, the judge made it clear, he goes, well, I'm not invalidating the permit process of the DOD, but if you didn't designate a land that, that is under it, you probably shouldn't be considering any land. You know, even though you don't have a decision from the judge yet, doesn't mean the town.
I don't think we have the authority to just.
Then you can do a freeze or a moratorium or whatever in the interim.
But, but again, so there's a process to that.
And if we're starting with.
And so I think we've already started on our own ideas of a process.
Yep, yep. Well, I didn't know that till tonight.
Yeah.
I didn't know that till tonight. I mean, I've heard that the DOD is going to be removed, I mean, trying to follow all these different meetings and the schedules and getting on agendas and, you know, the people that want to weigh you down, they will, because it's hard to keep up with all this.
Yep.
But, big picture, the town has an issue with the DOD. I mean, so we got, and if you're working on it, that's great. And if there are some people that are trying to freeze the DOD because they think, you know, you're not freezing anything if there's nothing there that allows you to do the, to subdivide lands, so.
And I think that, that will come out in the wash if that's the case.
Yeah, well, if the decision comes out.
Yep.
In the favor, and if it's, and if they don't settle, who knows? They could settle tomorrow with all the plaintiffs.
Yep.
And you don't have a decision, but you got what the judge said, but then you're in litigation number two. And it's like, wow, we better just get this cleared up before.
We're trying, but.
Yeah, I get you.
The government bureaucracy moves very slowly.
I, I hear you.
We're trying as hard as we can.
Yep, I hear you.
To do what we can for the best for the town.
So.
If, if I could, if you have any other different points, I'd love you to ask them, but there's a lot of folks here, so if somebody else would like to have them.
No, that was my biggest point, is concern with the DOD being used to freeze, to preserve, and the fact that Mr. Maskey is, Maxey is not here answering these questions. Yeah, he's got a legal right to do it, but he's also got a PNS that says right in the PNS, you're not going to change zoning. That can't be dependent. That sale of that country club is not supposed to be dependent on any zoning change. And that's exactly what's, he's basically going to say, well, we're going to use the DOD. It's not a zoning change.
I don't think it's a zoning change, I think it's a zoning guarantee.
Well, it didn't say.
I thought the PNS had that no guarantees of zoning.
No, they said there would be no zoning changes. There won't be no zoning changes in the PNS?
It might say both.
Yeah.
But this isn't a zoning change. This is a zoning freeze, so that he can utilize the bylaw as it's written and as was applicable at the date of the submission of the form.
Yes, oh, I clearly get what he's trying to do, but the DOD is not clear, and it's not reasonable.
Well, may, may not be clear and very well-written. I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
But it's not, using the DOD is not a zoning change, it's utilizing an element of the bylaw that allows you to do certain things.
But, but it is, with all due respect. If something is zoned for mixed use at the hospital, and you're going to put a warehouse in which is industrial, and you use the DOD permit process to let a five-member board allow a warehouse to go in mixed use, that is zoning change.
No.
It, it is.
Well, it'd be like any other, like I said, a cell tower overlay district.
No, I respectfully disagree. I respectfully disagree.
I think that the, the, the challenging part to the other side of that argument is, the Attorney General approved all that. Whether it was good or bad, the Attorney General did approve that in 2012. So that's the other side of the hurdle that, again, the sandwich I eat.
I like you make these points because it's helping me. Just so you know, when they get submitted to the Attorney General by the town of Lakeville, it said they would submit the planning changes, and where it actually applied on the districts, that never got it submitted to the Attorney General. So who knows what else the town, you know, no plan. I've got the documents now that says you're going to get a new plan where the districts apply, and here's the bylaw, Attorney General. There's, there was no plan.
Okay.
Another problem with the DOD. You wouldn't have this problem with the DOD if you had a map and you had a bylaw that says where, 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 where it applies to. You have to have a designated district. The DOD gave you, the DOD gave you uses, but it didn't designate the districts to where it applies, as it does with all the, your other overlay districts.
No, I am.
So it was always, that's my biggest point.
Yeah.
You know, the water one, applies to the whole town. It's not, the water's not changing zoning, it's just saying it applies to the whole town. So there is a difference. But I went too long, I don't mean any disrespect.
No, I, I know you don't.
Towards anybody who volunteers their time, it's just frustrating to see the town potentially get involved in more litigation, when there's clearly, why even entertaining a subdivision plan when there's a PNS, you know, that's for a warehouse? I don't know why it can't just be, why it can't be said, we've got it, but we're not entertaining it right now, we're not even going to consider it until this is resolved.
Well, I'd like to find out if that's possible.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're trying, you're trying to sell for a warehouse, and you hit it right in the beginning, sir. You know, like, Chairman, why are we here? You, you know, this is just more wasted time. I don't think it's a waste of your time and our time, when, he said he's selling to put a state-of-the-art warehouse there. I, I, it's, it's amazing. Is he preserving his legal right? Maybe, but.
Well, I believe it's because we, we discussed holding the public hearing to do away with it, so these preliminary plans were sent in as a result of that, to try to freeze it, so that we could not do away with it. And just so you know, prior to even the hospital special permit being granted, we did discuss narrowing the DO down to certain areas. We actually discussed it at, in multiple meetings, to, to confine it to just either a mile or a half a mile from highway on-ramps and off-ramps. So we were in the process of trying to do that, but unfortunately, it does take quite a long time, we have to get it to town meeting, and certain things, when it's done on, on meetings, everyone can watch, things happen.
A year ago?
Mm-hmm.
And this plan was submitted at that time. And that's why we didn't act on it, because it would have froze the zoning gap.
Yeah, we got to get this DOD as a town, we got to get it.
Yep.
Whatever way, whatever I can do to help, I, I'm all for trying to help.
Join a board.
Yeah.
Please, please do.
Yeah.
So, would anybody else like to make any comments on this?
June 28th deadline is why we're here.
The June 28th deadline.
We're going to get sucked into buying this land for 15 million on a fake DOD.
Yes.
It's happening, is why we're here. We don't want to spend 15 million on a property that is zoned.
It, it is, it's, I mean, I said this at the other end, it's not worth 15, it's not worth 13. That's for a state-of-the-art warehouse, which you can't be put there. I don't believe it's a bona fide offer, and if you go to the Mass General Law, which I didn't bring with me, it clearly says that the offer can't, it cannot depend on a zoning change. Well, the guy, the, the, Northbridge is trying to put a warehouse there, which they can't put there, unless, unless there is a zoning change.
Again, that all depends on that interpretation from a judge, and we kind of need to.
Well, this will be a new case, though. This will be a new case. This will be a new case, and that's where the, that's why there is the urgency to say, we're going, you're just going to keep running into more of these, although it seems to be the same parties involved so far, that are trying to push these deals through. But the DOD, I, I just feel this urgency there to get an article, get it out there. You will get, you just got to vote to, to, to consider it for another month, you know, to buy it. Now, whether the town can afford that, I mean, it's a different issue, but it's really, it's not a legitimate purchase and sale, because they want to put a warehouse there, which they currently can't legally do without a lawsuit. So you'll have lawsuit number two from those residents. And it's like, it's unfortunate, the residents got to keep doing this.
Well, maybe we'll see a resident petition for a moratorium.
Maybe.
Or tell me.
Yeah, you won't make it in time, will you?
We'll make it in time, we're going to be 15 million in the hole because of Derek Maskey, thank you.
Yeah, well, if they approve.
I, I, I'm not the board of Selectmen, I don't make some of those decisions.
Yep, I hear you.
We're doing what we can on this side.
Yep, and that's why we've got this, and we need to, I applaud you for trying to get this DOD at least amended. Designate an area would be, that's not complicated. Let's, let's designate an area that it applies to, I'm sure the town will agree to it. I'm sure they won't agree that it applies to Lakeville Country Club. I, I, I'm very confident that they won't let you designate that as a DOD property, but based on the turnout that you just got, I mean, they want to preserve th, this community, and the DOD is the one that's causing all these doors to open up for people. They're just going to keep using it until, until we shut them down.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? Thank you. So, that said, I think that the planning board has the opportunity to continue this until, do you have a time that you'd like to?
So my understanding is, we're supposed to get, within 45 days, determination whether that's approved as is, approved as amended, or disapproved?
But these are new plans that you're extending today.
The board needs to consider it, but not necessarily make a decision.
Well, if you're forcing our hand, I'm going to say that we would.
What, what I was going to, what I was going to suggest, if it's okay, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
If we, if we grant like an extension to a date certain of the 45 days, so perhaps to a meeting in July, if that was amenable?
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that make sense? Either one of them busy for, busier night than the other? We'll do 14th, I guess?
Yeah, let's say the 14th would be wiser, because sometimes in July and August, we sometimes forego our second meeting if there's not a lot of business, that's sort of a quiet time of year.
Yeah.
So we'd, we'd definitely act on our first meeting in July.
Is there, is there any additional detail? I'll obviously submit a digital version of these plans to the planning office. Is there any additional detail for this preliminary thing that you'd want to see before, in advance of that meeting?
I think that we needed a little bit more time for council to review. I would say, could we get comments back for any other changes or deficiencies?
Sure.
Within a couple of weeks that we get to them?
As long as it, it complies with the definition of a subdivision, and it complies with the zoning requirements, then, then I, you know, what they've submitted meets most of the other technical items, so.
And, you know.
So, so the sooner, you know, they get it out forward, just like I forwarded the last one, because of the controversial nature, and we want to make sure the board acts in a proper manner, you know, I'll make sure that they don't see, you know, a legal issue. And we'll have it on to give you any feedback and get it on the agenda for the 14th.
Okay, and more flexible, if for some reason that doesn't work, the timeframe, I know you guys are a busy few weeks ahead.
Mm-hmm.
So if there's a need to change that to the 28th or the like, just let us know.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I, I'm moved that the planning board continue this hearing until July 14th at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, so it's continued.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question for clarification, I'll come up to the table.
Thank you.
I'm Green Carboni, 34 Pickens Street. Just clarification, I know with the preliminary subdivision plan, that 45-day ticker is in place. Now, the plans were stamped at the town clerk, and what was the date?
April 19.
April 19, so 45 days is one. I heard the date, but I didn't.
June.
I believe that's June 2nd or 3rd.[1662.26]
2nd or 3rd, yeah.
All right, so I'm just concerned that because it is under the subdivision law, that for, there has to be some kind of a decision rendered back to the applicant within that 45 days.
No, the statute says the board needs to consider it, but they do not need to make a decision within the 45 days. So we've had an initial meeting with the applicant's representative to consider it. They've gotten feedback, they've continued it to date certain by mutual agreement.
In addition, I spoke to the zoning enforcement officer. He sort of concurred with all this, that, and we had discussed earlier in tonight's presentation, even if the planning board denied what was here, that does not negate that the plan was put in on April 19th or whatever the date was. That basically means the clock has started for about seven months.
Seven months from the submission date, yeah.
And the planning board has no penalty if we don't act.
I just wanted to...
It's, it's not, there's no constructive approval, it's only that we didn't act. It's not, it's not like a Form A lot.
No, it's not.
It, it's a different process, so, yeah, the, the planning board would not be deficient in their duties to not render a decision tonight. We have continued and we will continue to, because we're, we're, it's under consideration.
I just wanted to, you know, to be clear for the record, that's all.
Understood, and I appreciate you bringing that up for a clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 156 Rhode Island Road, which was continued from a previous hearing, and the applicant has requested to continue. Mark, did they give a date specific, or just to our next meeting and wait till they hear, he hears from his engineer?
Yeah, he requested till our next meeting, which I believe is on June 9th, if I remember correctly.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah, his engineer broke his leg and needed some extensive surgeries, so...
So I, I move that the planning board continue the 156 Rhode Island Road site plan review until June 9th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the site plan review of 2 Bedford Street, which is a continued hearing from previous. Thomas J. Parento, you're on, is it his behalf?
Yes. Mr. Parento is here as well. My name's attorney Gillian Morton. So we're here presenting our revised plan with also the comments that the engineer is not here tonight, and the town planner also gave me a few items that we can go through, but really, this is kind of our, our idea for the site. If you have, you can pull up the big plans there. What would be more helpful to go through just the overall idea, because this is really kind of the first time that you're, you're seeing this?
I think we saw something before, but this is the first time we're seeing the amended plan.
Okay, okay. So let's go through some of the nuances and changes that were actually really helpful. So, there was an issue with, with the site, there was a retaining wall, and we met with the town planner speaking about that, and we actually removed that, and it made the flow of the lot a lot better, so that's on the right side of the plan. If you look, I don't know if you have the older plans, but we had this retaining wall, completely removed that. We also were able to make a lot of the adjustments regarding access to the site, because we didn't want any sort of traffic or hazards, so removing a few parking spaces. A lot of the comments were notations that we needed on the plan. I see a note here from the town planner I just received about the dumpster location, and I believe on the revised plan, it is on the back, but I, I'll obviously confirm all this with the, with the engineer. So the, the idea was to move that so it'd be more convenient for the restaurant space.
Yeah, I think maybe fenced in as well, I think this...
Yes, that is noted on your, I believe it's the last page of your plans. There is a diagram regarding the dumpster concrete pad. He has a note on their dumpster pad with fence enclosure referred to on layout plan, so absolutely that would be the intention to fence that in.
I didn't see where it's located, however.
And I agree, I thought it, I think it might be on the back of the building where there's two squares, but it needs to be...
Yeah, there's two windows, yeah.
Absolutely.
It's really kind of light, and I'm not sure whether...
Yep, so I made a note to confirm that he needs to note that on the plan, but it would be fenced in like the last page talks about. One of the notes, too, was regarding the, the paperbark maple tree should be replaced with native species. I'm curious if there's anything in particular that the planning board would, would like to see there, so I can bring that back to the engineer or just go off of the native species list?
Yeah.
Some people have particular, this is my first time in front of this board, so some towns that I go in front of have particular trees.
We would, we would love to see native species, I think the open space committee likes that. We're not gonna hold you at anything other than if the location would require a, you know, a tree that grew in a certain fashion to allow visibility beneath.
Okay.
You know, to not, not affect vehicle lines of sight.
Okay.
Because the other thing is, these particular trees don't really grow that tall, so, I mean, it, they grow above the line of sight, but they don't really grow, they'd be hiding a lot of the building, so you may want to go for a more mature type of...
Okay, okay.
Of, of tree. I mean, there are retail businesses there, so we don't want to hide it.
Right. At the north entrance, where there's a one-way, do, do not enter, is painted on the pavement curving around the patio, should be extended to narrow that drive width. I, I think that's a pretty reasonable request as well.
Really, I think to keep vehicles, the, the public from driving behind the building, I think was his intent.
Yep. And the last one we were looking at, so the use of the reclaim for all the parking lot base material is not usually recommended. I don't think we have an issue with that as well, so...
Yeah, I mean, if you're, you're gonna reuse what's on the site and grind it and pot, and, and stockpile it for, okay, so, so like if you did half gravel and half the reclaimed as the subgrade, that would be good, and I'd probably use up most of that material.
Okay.
And I, I guess an additional concern would be if you're using what's off, on the site currently, was your intent to process it onsite, or were you gonna take it off-site, process it, and then bring something back?
Dust.
Okay. You just don't, if that was the case, we'd have dust controls and additional measures for that and hours for operation for that, because it's a pretty noisy process, so...
Okay. So I guess I would open it up to the board if we wanted to go into more particulars that our engineer went through. I don't know if the town planners had a chance or had any more questions other than that? Was that really it?
No, I think we addressed pretty much all the other ones.
I had two other questions. One's sort of nitpicky, and the other one is more of a legal issue, maybe you could, not a legal issue, a legal question.
Okay.
Is, I believe this is actually two lots, it's 2 and 4 Bedford Street, but the plan only references 2, references 2 Bedford Street. Is there a reason for that? I feel like lot 4 should be referenced on the plan, just because we're getting rid of an address out of that, even if dissolved into a single number when it's done.
Right. Do you have, I don't, I don't have the title in front of me, but it could just be notation regarding on the deed, how that was, that was planned out.
Just what the engineer put on the plan. Should have been 2 and 4.
Okay, okay.
Could we add that just for...
On here?
Yeah, just to put on the plan, just to say it's 2 and 4 Bedford, just to make sure that...
And I'll double-check title-wise, how that's held. I believe it's under one deed under the Realty Trust, so, for the LLC, so I'll double-check that. We can, that's, that's not nitpicky, that's...
My other one is the nitpicky one, that's more of a legal question.
Okay.
The nitpicky one is, you have plenty of frontage here, this is, basically, it's a Form A lot, but we continue to show the old buildings like it's pre-existing non-conforming requirement. They really don't need to be shown. They've been gone for two years now, or thereabouts.
Okay.
Is that, is there a reason for that that I don't understand? Or is it just the engineer kept them on there?
If you look at the, I think it's just helpful for the zoning table, the zoning compliance table where they had the required, the existing, and the proposed. It can be removed if that's your preference. I think that's just what the engineers are used to, to doing.
Yeah, I, I think we're far enough along now that it sort of doesn't matter, but it's nice to not have extra layers that aren't needed in the plan.
Correct.
Sometimes it gets a bit convoluted.
Yep.
That said, I do remember seeing a comment from the Board of Health about an existing well and having it properly decommissioned. Is that something that was addressed?
Yes, we spoke to my client about that.
There's already approvals for the watering, from the town water.
Right, but the existing well needs to be decommissioned, like fill it with bentonite or something, however, they do that to abandon that well so nothing else could go down into the aquifer.
The wall takes place.
Okay. Does anybody else from the planning board have any questions or concerns?
So, can we see a rendering of the building, or is it...
Well, that is another question we had. I know initially, we saw a set of plans months ago, or however long the last time we looked at this.
Right.
And I, I feel like something's changed in here, is there...
Yeah, the, the comment letter refers to, comment letter refers to some architectural drawings being amended to show like stone front and hardy board or some other types of siding, however, it's not in this set of drawings, and it, we never received it, so...
No, it wasn't done because we wanted to make sure there wasn't any other changes in it.
Right, getting this, that was intentional, we didn't, yeah, yeah, it was intentional. I did the same thing, I said, "Where are my architectials?"
Okay.
Yeah, we, we told them to be on hold.
Okay, so, are we, are we, this is a proposed, it's, it's not a density bonus? Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're, we can't approve tonight based on, we need changes. We'd need to see the architectural.
Fine, that's fine, yep.
So I think we're forced to continue for at least one more meeting, and to Mr. Parento's point, he didn't want to see us have him shaved 10 feet off the building and then have to have it rerun.
Yeah, yeah, nope. I, I make sense, yep.
So your intent is, if everything within the site goes good tonight with a couple minor changes, you'll be able to get on a future agenda with us with architecturals and the minorly amended site plan to come back and hopefully get approval at that point.
The reason we want is to come back and...
Yep, we need two weeks, architect, architect, need two weeks, okay.
Yeah, the architectural things says the drawings show materials for trim, the stone, stone veneer and hardy plank, so that's, he doesn't say what, what color is, but, you know.
Okay.
And then also individually framed windows and doors, so they say they're gonna add those as well, and then the other architectural comment was about incorporating wall projections or recesses, because it's more than 100 feet, and they've done that. You can see that from the, just the layout of the building.
Right.
Footprint of the building, and those were the previous comments on the architecture, so...
Mr. Chair, I did have a couple of questions, just based on...
Go right ahead.
The last plan that we saw, I think it had mentioned there was refrigeration planned?
There is, will be no cold storage at this facility.
And I see it does still say light manufacturing, no, is that for...
No, well, it's, it, there's not gonna be manufacturing of anything there.
That is allowed in business use, though.
I know, but I think they have to sell it onsite as well.
A certain percentage.
And not distribute. So I just, I saw that it still says light manufacturing, so I just...
Right. One of the ideas, too, is we're developing this site, there's gonna be space for Ms. Parento, possibly other tenants, we don't, and things aren't nailed down with that, as, as you know with development.
Speculation base, you know.
So that would be something that they would have to move forward to, if they had to go in front of you for something more particular. I think that would happen at that point.
Good. Need anything else?
Nope.
That's it. Yeah, do you have any comments?
All set.
So based on our discussion tonight, when would you guys like to return with the amended plan and architecturals?
So, your next meeting, was it the 14th?
June 9th.
June 9th.
Or June 23, and then July 14, for the next three meetings.
I'd like to do June 9.
Yeah, yeah.
Good with both that? Okay. I move to continue the 2 Bedford Street, or I'm gonna call it 2 or 4 Bedford Street site plan review to June 9th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the, to approve the March 10th, 2022 minutes of meeting. Did anybody get a chance to review these?
Yes.
Any concerns or typos?
They seemed good.
I move to approve the planning board minutes of meeting for Thursday, March 10th, 2022, as drafted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is to review correspondence. Mark, do you have anything from local, other communities?
Not today.
Okay. Any old business to rehash?
I have a couple items for you to sign and get your receipt of appointment handbooks, committee handbooks.
Oh, excellent.
Or you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna return the document to you and take the handbook.
No.
You don't want this signed document back?
Yes, I do.
2022. Our intent here at 7:00 PM, and that'll be posted on the agenda if that changes.
Oh, Mr. Chair, oh, I was just gonna say, I just had a question, and honestly, I think this gentleman over here kind of helped. I was gonna just ask Mark if we could potentially get an update on where the appeal currently stands, because it's been quite a while, so I think it'd be nice to have.
Which appeal?
The Lakeville Hospital property. The planning board hasn't had any updates in two years.
Well, I think it was, yeah, like last...
Three of us are named in the lawsuit, and we don't get any updates.
I know, no one did.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't get any official updates either, as, as it was mentioned, the board, council is just monitoring, essentially is what they're doing, they're not actively defending it.
Yep.
Like many other communities, Lakeville lets the applicant defend their proposal. So, there's, I haven't spoke, I know there was a hearing, but I haven't spoke to town council about that particular hearing, so I don't know any of the details of what occurred, so...
Okay.
And there was just one other thing?
Go ahead, Ms. Chair.
I know I've heard a lot of talk around town about a new town hall and fire station, and the town paid $80,000 for a feasibility study, so I was just curious if you've heard anything about it? Is it available? Will planning board have a chance to review it? I'm just curious.
Again, I'm not, I'm involved in a lot of things right now, but I have not been involved in the feasibility study for the town hall slash fire station project. I do not know kind of where that's sitting right now, but I can certainly find out and give you an update as far as at the next meeting, and depending if you'd like, I can talk to Amy Questle about State Hospital, although I may not be able to discuss it necessarily in public. I'm not entirely sure of where, where it stands.
I'm told it in the past, years ago, town administrators would give a confidential update that couldn't be circulated, because that attorney-client privilege gives that privacy for those items, but it would just be nice if we could request that.
Okay.
For, just an update, you know, we're not looking for...
To read briefs, or...
Any kind of gotcha moment as much as just where it's at.
Okay, sure.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss from the planning board?
That's it.
Good.
That said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.